St. Joseph Parish of Falmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, January 9th, 2023. It is 6:30 in the evening. I'm going to ask that you please silence your cellphones. And if anyone is recording this public meeting, please notify me as the chair. Noel? Okay. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any recognitions from the board this evening?
Nothing comes to mind.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Patterson? Okay. Announcements?
I have one. I'd like to announce that Falmouth will recognize the White Ribbon Campaign on January 14th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Herman Room at the Falmouth Public Library. And for those that don't know, the White Ribbon Campaign is really just an attempt to get commitment from men to combat against domestic violence in all its forms. So I'll be there for that. Tom Kurtman is going to be the moderator, I believe. And it's nice to have a bunch of guys show up and make a commitment to that and recognize that date.
It is.
It's the whole month of March, I believe. So we announce it in January and then leading up to it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other announcements?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention that the regional Cape Cod, there's a regional Cape Cod police training that's going to be taking place tomorrow at 390 Acapescot Road. The police department will be notifying the neighborhood through postings, door knockers, et cetera. So just to let folks know that there is a training going on and it's scheduled for most of the day during business hours.
Thank you. I also would like to remind the public that the board is hosting a community forum on Wednesday night from 5:30 to 7:00. And we are looking for feedback from the community about what you'd like to see in your next town manager as we move through the process of hiring. So again, that's 5:30 to 7:00 this Wednesday night at the Lawrence School Auditorium. Anything else from the board? Okay. Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the select board will not participate in any discussion of your topic. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Fineran.
Hi, I'm Mark Fineran Grandev. I've been coming here, sitting in that seat, for quite a long time. And just as a historical perspective, before any of you were ever seated here, and there's one thing I could always kind of depend on, and that was looking in my enterprise and seeing the agenda for the upcoming selectmen's meetings. And it was rare that it wasn't printed. There was one occasion years ago, different manager, altogether different board, when the agenda wasn't put in there, and you're not going to convince me that it wasn't done for a particular reason, to keep a certain crowd from coming to influence the particular item on the agenda, and that's just my belief. But as I said, I've always been able to depend on the agenda being in the enterprise, except for the last few months. It was noticeably absent again last week, and it's becoming, well, quite regular. And I think the public depends on it. And I really think the open meeting law calls for it, although it can be printed somewhere else. But anyway, it's just happening more frequent of late, and I think it's, I just wanted to make note.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. I'm not aware of any other times prior to this past Friday that it has not been posted in the enterprise, and we'll check on that. I will tell you that both the agenda for Saturday's meeting and today's meeting and a press release were all sent to the enterprise on time. They did not make it into the enterprise, but that was not the fault of the town manager's office.
No, I'm just pointing it out.
And I double, yes, and I, right.
It has been.
I double-checked on that. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Town manager's preliminary report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The meeting begins with two committee interviews. We have one candidate for one vacancy on the Board of Health. Likewise, we have one candidate for one vacancy on the Council on Aging. We have four public hearings tonight. The first is an application for an entertainment license for 23 Town Hall Square Timber Axe Bar and Grill. The board has received, as you know, complaints about the noise from live and recorded music at this location, which led us to discover that there is no entertainment license and hasn't ever been, to our knowledge, for this premises. The individuals who have raised concerns reside in apartments in very close proximity to the premises. Lieutenant Doyle has provided a summary of the noise complaints received and offers his perspective on the noise level. The application proposes relatively limited hours, which may mitigate these concerns. Department staff have reviewed the application and raised no concerns other than the noise issue. The next hearing is an application for an entertainment license for 500 Wacoit Highway Moto Pizza. Department staff have reviewed the application and raised no concerns. This office has not received any concerns from abutters or other parties to date. Third hearing is an application for a Sunday entertainment license from 285 Main Street Shiverick's Cafe and Bar. The board recently approved an entertainment license for this premises. The applicant now seeks a Sunday license with no restriction on the hours of operation. Department staff have reviewed the application and raised no concerns. This office has not received any concerns from abutters or other parties to date. The last hearing is an application for a new all-alcohol beverage hotel license for 291 Jones Road Holiday in Falmouth. This establishment is operating under a new ownership. They were unable to transfer the existing license due to an issue related to the prior owner. Department staff have reviewed the application and raised no concerns. The office has not received any concerns from abutters or other parties to date. Your last hearing is a request to increase taxi fares. There is one of the licensed taxi operators has requested a 10-cent increase from 65 cents to 75 cents per two-fifths of a mile. If approved, this rate increase would apply to all licensed taxi operators. Included in your packet is a rate comparison prepared by Diane Davidson that shows the proposed rate is in line with neighboring towns, and I recommend approval. Moving on to the business portion of the agenda, the first item is to approve a borrowing anticipation note. This short-term borrowing will meet our cash flow needs for fiscal year '23 for four projects, for capital projects. When the note matures this October, we will determine whether to issue a long-term bond or another short-term note, depending on interest rates and future borrowing plans. Town meeting has authorized this borrowing. The notes have been sold, and we are pleased with the net interest rate, which is just under 3.2%. The rate is based in part on Falmouth's AAA bond rating and on the timing of the sale. The projects and amounts are outlined in a memo from Finance Director Ed Santio. A considerable amount of work is required to complete any borrowing, and I want to acknowledge the finance team members who stepped up in the absence of the Finance Director, and they are Vicky Rose, Patty O'Connell, Tricia Favouli, and Melanie Bush. It is important that the board's motion clearly references the lengthy written motion prepared by Bond Council when we get to this item. The next item on your agenda, the business agenda, is to vote to adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget. I included a copy of my slide presentation in your packet. I look forward to any questions or discussion the board may offer prior to taking a vote to transmit the budget to the Finance Committee with or without amendments. Next item on your business agenda is a vote to adopt the multi-hazard mitigation plan. FEMA has approved the draft plan that was approved by the Select Board on July 25th. A confirming vote of the Select Board is now required per FEMA regulations. This report outlines plans for addressing hazards such as floods, hurricanes, winter storms, et cetera. The plan identifies mitigation measures the town can take to reduce risk to human life and property damage. In addition to serving as a planning tool, updating this plan is required to maintain eligibility for grant funding from FEMA following a natural disaster. An updated plan is also required so that Falmouth property owners can continue to qualify for property insurance discounts through the community rating system. Item four on your business agenda is an update from the Cape Light Compact on electric rates. Maggie Downey, Director of the Cape Light Compact, will provide an update on rates paid by residents and businesses. And I would note that for town facilities, we have locked in a long-term rate, which turns out to be far better than what the market is today. So we were fortunate to have the support of the Cape Light Compact in putting that long-term municipal facility electric bid out a couple of years ago. Fifth on your business agenda is a vote to approve the Veterans Council Mission Statement. We then have consideration of approving a letter with respect to legislation on the ferry embarkation fee. The towns of Tisbury and Oak Bluffs have voted to endorse legislation which would triple this fee from the current 50 cents per passenger to $1.50 per passenger. And what that would mean in terms of Falmouth revenues is our annual revenue, which hovers around $400,000 per year, would potentially triple if the legislature were to adopt the proposal that Tisbury and Oak Bluffs have submitted. So the question for the board tonight is whether you want to also endorse that legislation. And then finally, on the business agenda, we have an all-alcohol change of manager for 48 Theater Drive Cape Cod Country Club. That application has been reviewed by staff and no concerns were raised. I do recommend approval. And then finally, on the consent agenda, all of the items have been reviewed by staff and are ready for action by the board. No concerns have been raised, and I recommend approval. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub.
Madam Chair, could I make a correction to my previous announcement?
Yes, please.
It's March 14th, which makes more sense.
You know, I was thinking, I didn't know if it was just kind of a kickoff.
I just got off the phone with somebody before the meeting, and I mistakenly, but then when I went to enter it in, I realized it belongs in March.
So it's March 14th.
Yes. So maybe I'll announce it again in March.
Okay, let's start our committee interviews. The first interview is with Amy Roth. There is a vacancy on the Board of Health, unexpired term ending 6/30/23. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you very much. I'm Amy Roth. I've been a Falmouth resident for about 18 years, and I've served on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for the last four. I'm interested in the Board of Health. We work very closely. The chair and I have solid ways to develop rules and regulations for mandatory recycling and permitted haulers with the Board of Health over the past year. And in working with the Board of Health, I've come to know those folks, work with them, have tremendous respect for them. And in my day job, I'm an environmental consultant, background in geology, geochemistry. And so the goals of Board of Health align pretty well with what I do every day, which is, you know, have focused on sort of public health, welfare, people, the environment. It all fits together. So this is something I'm interested in pursuing.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
I have a statement. I serve on the Salt Waste Advisory Committee with Amy, and she does an excellent job, keeps us all straight and aligned and on the right path. So it's time to make the motion. I'd certainly love to do that.
Our second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this is for the unexpired term ending 6/30/23. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
I'm going to go down slightly.
Okay. Our second interview is Pamela Truesdale for the Council on Aging. Welcome. And again, this is an unexpired term ending 6/30/24.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Pamela Truesdale, live in West Falmouth. As I submitted in my application, I've been a longtime resident of Falmouth, served as, on the Conservation Commission as their administrator, you might have noticed, so have a little bit of background with the town as well. And I've been a pretty regular face and part of the senior center for more than the last four years. I started off with working with the senior center back when we were back in the old one, the DeMello Building, and am happy to have survived the transition with them to our brand new, wonderful senior center. And over those years, I feel like I've gotten to know Jill and her amazing staff quite well, and I feel like I'm part of the family. I think you probably read in my application, too, I've been a Shine Medicare counselor. That was kind of my segue into the senior center. And I think this, our new senior center is really an incredible asset for the seniors in this town. The programs that are offered and the services that are offered, as well as the new building itself, which I hope all of you have seen, is truly amazing. And I admire very much what Jill and her staff have done. And I would simply like to expand my involvement and my contribution to the senior center. And I'm hoping that by joining the Council on Aging that that would be an appropriate next step for me, and I hope you may find me a suitable candidate. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions from the board?
No, I think it was well explained, and I think she'll do a good job.
I would just like to thank you on behalf of my wife, because she's used you as a counselor for trying to figure out her Medicare benefits and which of the plans, of which there are many, would be most appropriate for her. So thank you. And I would be happy to recommend that we appoint Pamela Truesdale to the Council on Aging for a term ending June 30th of 2024.
Second.
Is it '24 or '23?
This one says '24.
Okay, it's a year and a half.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And for your service as well.
Okay, we'll go on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is an entertainment, an application for an entertainment license, Town Hall Partners LLC, doing business as Timber Axe Bar and Bowl, 23 Town Hall Square. Do we have someone here to represent the applicant?
Madam Chair, I have a family member that actually works in the building, so I probably should recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and the amendments thereto that Town Hall Partners LLC, doing business as Timber, has applied for entertainment license to be exercised at 23 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 6:45 PM on the above application. Per order of the Select Board, publication date Friday, December 30th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Price. Anyone here to represent the applicant? Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mike Mueller, lifelong resident of East Falmouth, one of the co-owners next door over at Timber Axe Bar and Bowl. As many of you are aware, our initial understanding was that we had, were able to give entertainment as part of our liquor license. We found out that that was not the case, and we stopped that, and that's why we're here this evening. Early on, we had DJs. There was a couple of DJs we had all summer long. It's a different type of entertainment. It was all that we had within our network. We've since been able to get together a great pool of local musicians, like eight to 10 people, that kind of alternate off everything from acoustic guitar to a piano to even a couple of two-piece duo bands with guitar, a guitar and singer, a couple guitars or singer and a drummer. So we've got our application in with what we feel is a reasonable set amount of hours rather than like a blanket all-the-time type of entertainment license. As you saw, Wednesday, we'd like to bring in a person with a microphone that plays music bingo. It's like a trivia-type thing. If anybody hasn't had the opportunity to do it, it's a lot of fun, a couple of hours. Thursdays would be typically, I try to schedule like a solo act, just one person with a guitar or piano that, the guitars are amplified, but it's usually not an intrusive sound that comes out of there. Fridays and Saturdays would be a little bit of the longer, into the later end of the evening, from 8:00 to 11:00 is what we asked for in the application, and that would be either a duo, occasional DJ, occasional larger band. Yes, and I think that's all.
Questions from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
We've received a number of complaints about the loudness of the music from residents in the area. You know, have you changed your policies and how you operate?
Yes. Early on, since we're new, we're trying to figure this out. We've done a number of things to educating staff to keep the exterior doors and windows closed. Some of our doors have a feature in them, when you pull them open, they remain open. So a lot of times when people come in, the doors would remain open. Staff wouldn't recognize it right away, and then all of a sudden, a little while later, they'd go, oh, no, the doors are open. So we've educated them to make sure to check the doors and to keep those closed. Early on, we had the entertainers just in an open area that we had by moving some tables. We've since moved them, as what you see on the plan that we submitted, further into the center of the building to try and stay away from, we understand we have some abutters close on the west side of the building. So we've tried to move the entertainers further away from that, directing the speakers and the sound in a direction headed this way instead of anything that might go out back that way, kind of to where our crowd congregates within the building. And we've also, through training with the staff and conversations with the entertainers, to keep the noise level at a reasonable amount where they can still hear their instruments, but keeping it at a lower decibel to try and solve any issues of the noise emitting outside of the building. And also turning it down on the nights that it stays a little bit later.
Mr. Patterson, for the record, Kevin Clower, attorney for Almond Clower Law Firm, here with Timber this evening. I did want to just point out that in the correspondence that came from the police department, they did note that the noise level was generally not excessive and not audible until it was just outside of the establishment. So I just think that's important to note in terms of the complaints. I don't disregard the fact that the abutters have certainly had some impacts and we're working to mitigate that, but I think that's an important thing to note in terms of the complaints.
Mr. Zalinski?
Mr. Clower, either one of you can answer this. You said that you are trying to get a handle on educating your staff. Is there policies posted within the business now to help educate them on a nightly basis?
Yes, we recently were able to find a great general manager, and he's been training in the last couple of weeks to try and understand what it is that we do. Comes with a lot of experience, and he's helping. We have notes posted, and we talked with the staff, that works on the evenings that we have the entertainment, the whole package that comes on the entertainment nights with, you know, involves, you know, how to account for the payment and for the entertainers and, you know, everything that's lined up in the schedule. And as part of that, it has the instructions to make sure that the doors are, you know, secured while the entertainment's going on.
Just for the record, I want to make sure that if somebody responds over there, they don't say, "I didn't know."
Yes.
The information wasn't made available to me. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yep. We do have those procedures.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Patterson?
One more question for you. Now, is there an easy contact number that the abutters could use if all of a sudden somebody has dropped the rules, relaxed them inadvertently, and they need to correct things?
Yes, if they, if they, if they can call a, if they can call our main number, and we now have a procedure in place for either myself if I'm there, or if the general manager is there, or we have shift leaders now that are, that we, through this process, we've worked those things out where now we have a shift leader in place who's the person of contact, who is in charge, knows all of the operations that we have and knows everything that's expected for that if myself or the general manager are not in the building.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the public?
So, good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, Mr. Johnson Staub. Let me introduce myself again. I know you're already familiar, but Lynda Sumortis, 137 Main, Unit 2, 25 to maybe 30 feet behind Timber, can throw a stone. Let me also, I'm going to try to be brief because I don't feel well. Long COVID, not contagious, but an effort to be here. Let me introduce you to anti-anxiety meds. Thank you, Timber. Thank you, Timber.
Please, please address your comments to the board.
Thank you. Or not thank you, but sad. So I'm not going to go over everything that Michael went over about what they said that they would do in their license. I did notice that soundproofing was not mentioned tonight at all, which was mentioned at another time. This all started in June. I reached out, trying not to call the police. I reached out to Ashley, who I understand is no longer there. She never told Devon. I don't know if Devon is there anymore or not. He was the manager. I don't know who the general manager is. Devon gave me his personal number. I don't know if that was a real number or not, but I texted him many times when the music was out of control. Never a response. I've gone into the bar, the door's always open, even after they said they would shut the door. I spoke and met Michael Miller. He never told me he was an owner at the time. He told me he, you know, I asked for a manager and he came over. He did not introduce himself as an owner. I had to do my own investigating. We shook hands, you know? I didn't want to have to call the police, probably 20 times, only to be told, as you know, and you've heard it all before, that there's a 150-foot thing, and it has to be heard outside of that to be a violation. I am in their lap. That is ridiculous. I don't know who came up with that, but that's crazy. I'm in their lap. I can't hear the words, but I hear that pulsing heartbeat. It's awful. So now everybody knows there was no license to start with. They have very smart representation. We all know that. We all know Town Hall Square Group, very, very smart. How that went unnoticed, please. You have to, you may not say it, but in your gut, you have to know. You have to know something was up, you know? You have to know something was up, you know? I don't know. Soundproofing. I've written many emails, you've all read them. I just, I don't know. I see the new schedule, you know? It's the amplification, you know? Michael was very casual, and oh, you know, casually speaking and the whole thing. He's not on the other side of it. And my guess, and what I've been told from other people, is he's not there all the time. And there is that number that you can call the bar. It's a very young staff. And the times I walked in there, it was like deer in the headlights. I get it. Look at this. It's a deer in the headlights. What is she doing here? Towels over their shoulder, you know? Very cute, scared to death. Michael's not here, Devon's not here, Devon's not in yet. Yeah, you know? And even the police telling me they were in their parameters of their entertainment license. Did nobody bother to look to see there was one? I don't get it, you know? I came the night that Chivrick's license was approved. I know I'm not supposed to speak to anything else, I'll get gavelled, but I came to support abutters that never showed. Well, we're here tonight. We're here tonight. I love where I live. I'm in my 12th year there. I was never on these before. I am 75-plus. I don't want to be on these. I thank you for having these public hearings now for these entertainment licenses, but they're so casual when they speak to it, especially Mr. Clower, when he was with the 150 feet, you know, blah, blah, blah. It's all BS. It's just, you know, come some night, stand behind there. I have to sleep on the sofa. You know all this. I've said it all before. You know, Mr. Patterson, the night of Chivrick's granting of the license, if I'm not mistaken, he said amplification. He said this to Elia, you know, from the pizza joint, who I love. I love his pizza. I love Elia, right? Amplification of music should not be heard beyond the walls of your establishment. I don't know if that can be done, if they do not soundproof. Mr. Bogajian, AKA Longfellow, involved in all this, definitely has the wherewithal to soundproof that old building. It's an old building. I was there and it was Ryan, and it was just bowling. Make up your mind what you want to do. Do you want to dance? Do you want to karaoke? Do you want to ax? Do you want to bowl? Do something and do it right. But I thank you for listening to me. You can tell I'm frustrated, I don't feel well. But again, I do appreciate that you are having public hearings so other people do not have to suffer the way we have suffered.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Brendan O'Keefe. I'm a local musician. I've played at Timber and other bars in the area. In all due respect to the noise complaint, I just wanted to point out that as far as being amplified, we are no louder than a basic sound system in any establishment on Main Street. We've gone down as low as one, in between one and two on the PA. I mean, we could measure the decibels of how loud we actually are, but we've got complaints even when we've been at the lowest setting. And I'm just here to represent Timber. I think it's important to have music and arts and a healthy place for people to go and enjoy, you know, local entertainment, and it's super important to the community, you know? And again, as far as us plugging in and amplifying, we usually play, you know, most of the acts that are over there are singer-songwriters, so they're playing acoustic and singing, but it's not anything that's like cranked up, you know, past a normal level, you know? And there's live music at many venues on Main Street. And again, we've never gone past, never gone past two and gone as low as one. I'm not sure what the exact measurement is, but we've been super respectful of that, you know, and would continue to be. So I'm just here in my support of local music and Timber, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Dear members of the board, for the record, my name's Richie Metha. I'm here in concern of the entertainment license application for Timber Axe Bar. I am the principal owner with Linda Sumortis of 137 Unit B, and she's lived in this location. Most of what I'm going to say, some of it she's already said. My concern is that the times applied for will be closely adhered to. Over the last six months, Linda's had to call the police department many times. She's called over to the managers when she thought that they had overstepped their timeframe. And she's documented every phone call, only to find out that they never were operating with proper licensing. It was disappointing to hear that, considering all the headaches and frustration that it caused, with there being many nights where it was well past midnight, and it affected her on a daily basis with having to show her medication. In trying to find a middle road, suggesting moving the stage from the middle, maybe to the far right, along, you know, the parking lot side of Town Hall Square, which is the opposite side of the abutting wall. Linda's saying 25 to 30. It's 15 to 20. And that's from her bedroom window, you know? Just try to imagine that. You know, and as discussed in the emails with Linda and with town manager Peter Johnson Staub, why not install the soundproofing? You know? I mean, hopefully these remedies will give both sides peace. Timber can run its daily operations without having the wonderful men and women of Falmouth Police Department have to come down and enforce the license times, and for Linda to enjoy her space with the understanding and for the times that are granted. So, you know, thank you for airing me out. My name's Richie Metha. 137 Main Street, but it's more like 15, 20 feet, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, please.
Hello, I'm also co-owner of 137 Main Street, Meg Maggio, Unit 1. And in addition to the obvious necessity for soundproofing at additional cost to the landlord, which to me is a no-brainer, I don't even know why we have to still be discussing it nine months after the disturbance. The building has been fitted out in a very low-cost way. It's an old building, and if you add entertainment, no one is against musicians, no one is against entertainment, but there has to be a procedure followed. And I'm rather shocked at the lack of procedure, given the fact that the client has a lawyer who's very well experienced in this town. I don't understand how the entertainment license could have been overlooked or omitted. I'm shocked by the procedural missteps. The procedural missteps are twofold. They involve upgrading a building for soundproofing that is having live entertainment, and they involve applying, following the correct procedure to apply for an entertainment license. And I am shocked that the entertainment license procedure was not followed, and it was only because we brought to your attention that there was no entertainment license. I don't understand, was this a change of views? How could an establishment in downtown Falmouth on Main Street operate for an entire summer with noise complaints and no one, without an entertainment license? Legal counsel had been hired to handle all the permitting, and am I supposed to believe that experienced legal counsel omitted or forgot to apply for an entertainment license? It doesn't make sense, and it's extremely careless, and we, unfortunately, we are the victims of the fallout of no proper entertainment licensing on Main Street. And that, to me, is a very disconcerting fact and something that should never, ever happen in this town, especially when you have lawyers in close proximity and in daily contact with Town Hall. I really find the lack of a proper entertainment license to be extremely disconcerting. And when you discover that an entire summer has gone by with entertainment without licensing, where are your teeth? Where is the fine? What is the repercussions? What is to stop any other establishment from operating without a license if they know there's no penalty being enforced? This is a procedure, this is an omission which requires a fine and a penalty. And I don't see any fine or penalty being issued for operating an entire summer at an entertainment establishment without a license. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Again, Kevin Clower, and, you know, forgive me. You know, I think people like to see conspiracy theories sometimes where there isn't one. There was a mistake made. It was an oversight. You know, the applicant obtained a liquor license, they went through the permitting process, and there was belief that the entertainment license was part and parcel of the liquor license. Clearly, that wasn't the case. We understand that. As soon as it came to light, the entertainment stopped. As soon as, we had actually received a letter from Mr. Johnson Staub, we sent, there was a response sent noting the steps that had been taken with regards to entertainers. The correspondence came back saying, "Well, there's no entertainment license," so the entertainment stopped that day. So the applicant is here trying to make that right. So if you're looking to blame someone, you want to blame me, that's perfectly fine. It was a mistake that was made, and we're here now seeking to rectify it. There has to be a balance between businesses and residences. This is a B1 zoning district. The restaurant and bar use is a byright matter. It's natural to think that a restaurant and bar would seek an entertainment, seem to have entertainment. The abutter, the applicants are working to address the concerns of the neighbors, have already done so in a number of ways. We're requesting, I think, a very limited scope of entertainment relative to most of the entertainment licenses in town. I think most entertainment licenses you see in town will run Monday to Saturday, you know, noon to 1:00, 1:00 a.m. We're not asking for that. We're asking for a very limited scope, because we understand that a mistake was made, and now we're trying to rectify it. But proving this in this limited scope allows Timber to proceed with an even playing field and seeks to also address the concerns of the neighbors. And there needs to be a balance, especially in areas like this, that are a zone for business. This is, you know, this is on Main Street. It's in Town Hall Square. It's a, this is a very busy area, and I think that what we're requesting is more than reasonable and does seek to address the concerns of the abutters, which I'm not disregarding, so.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you.
Mr. Zlinski?
After recognizing that a mistake had been made, as part of this rectification that we're talking about, would your client be willing to add some kind of soundproofing there as part of this rectification?
I don't know, I don't know what would be entailed in providing soundproofing to this building. So I think we can take steps to, again, move the stage. I think we can take steps to make sure everything's closed. I don't know how feasible it is to soundproof this building as it is.
So that's a no?
I, I'm not saying that. I don't, I just don't know. And I can't, I can't definitively say yes in this moment.
Madam Chair, make a suggestion that if that's a consideration, that we can, we'd continue this till they can come up with an answer that he can get from his client one way or the other.
And we can have that conversation as soon as we close the hearing amongst the board. Thank you, Attorney Clower. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I just feel like it's, there was revenue, there was revenue gained without a license all the way through. I think to satisfy some of the closer, it's a, the circumstances are a little more direct when you have people this close. And I think that's a small ask to at least investigate putting some kind of soundproofing in there to alleviate this issue with the abutters. It'd be important to me to know the difference.
Mr. Patterson?
I have some background, not a professional in terms of sound mitigation. I actually managed a mini-computer system back in the, I guess it was 80s, which was a pretty loud device with lots of fan noise in a confined work area, and the noise was just, you know, nerve-rattling. And we had people that were actually doing programming in it because it was a secure facility. The only thing I want to, and we did end up getting it soundproofed. And it was amazing, as the workmen were actually covering the walls on the inside of this room, how the sound level just kept coming down, because instead of the sound bouncing off the interior multiple times, it would be trapped and absorbed by the soundproofing material. The only thing I want to mention is that sound-absorbing materials come in various technical forms. And if it's the low-frequency, you know, vibration of pounding, low percussion beats, that's a different problem than higher-frequency kinds of sounds. They just need to use the right sound-absorbing material. But I think it's fair for us to basically ask them to have it evaluated and come back with a proposal on how they can actually control the sound inside that building.
Or if they can.
And if they can. That's exactly right. So I just would throw that out, just based on my own technical experience.
So just to be clear, the idea is that they would investigate and not that they would commit to if they will do it or not? Just investigate it and present that back to us?
Yeah, without putting Mr. Clower on the spot, making a split-second decision that he was unprepared to make, giving them the time to either talk about it with their client, investigate it or not. That's what, that's what my proposal is.
So really asking them to come back to us with a proposal for further sound mitigation? And then they can come back and say, "No, we're not willing to do that."
Right.
So am I hearing that you don't want to approve of this license until they come back and let us know, have a counterproposal in terms of what they're willing to do or not do?
Personally, I think it's a small ask. We've gone all summer with it going like this, and there was an oversight made by whoever to go a little bit longer, to get some more answers, and to help satisfy the abutters and keep this straightforward. I think that a continuance, in my opinion, is necessary in this case, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. This isn't just a commercial area, it's mixed. And you've got residents in very close proximity. I think technically it is possible to mitigate the amount of noise that's propagating beyond the walls of that establishment, but I think we should get technical expertise to come in, somebody that's a registered engineer that's, you know, got the experience in dealing with these kinds of issues, and let us know, and what the price is.
Okay, so do you want to put forward a motion?
To continue? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to continue.
I think, don't we have to continue to a certain date?
We do.
Yes.
So.
I don't know if you want to look at the 30th, I don't know if you want to ask the applicant how much time they would need.
I think that's a good idea to.
If the 30th, if they're able to do it by the 30th. That's fine? Okay. So we will continue it until January 30th. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. So the ayes have it, three to one, and we will see you back on January 30th. Okay, our second hearing, application for an entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license, Moto Pizza Falmouth LLC, doing business as Moto Pizza, to be exercised at 500 Wacoit Highway, East Falmouth. I'm going to ask Ms. Scott Price to read the hearing notice, and then you will have 10 minutes.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183(a) of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926, and amendments thereto that Moto Pizza Falmouth LLC, doing business as Moto Pizza, has applied for entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license to be exercised at 500 Wacoit Highway, East Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, January 9, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. on the above application. Per order of Select Board publication date, Friday, December 30, 2022, Falmouth Enterprises.
You are representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
I just have one question.
Mr. Brown?
I know that there's a motel across the street, and it's actually a residence for a lot of folks. Do those folks know about the entertainment? Do those folks know about the entertainment license? Do you know? I saw the notice was sent to the motel owner, but that seemed to be, was it out of state or certainly at least out of town?
Okay. I don't know.
I know, I'm sorry, that's a surprise question at this time, but I do know that somebody that lives...
How entirely unprepared I was for this after that last one, but, yeah, I don't know, honestly, there's a, you know, we're right, we're in Wacoit, right, on the intersection there in the Village of Wacoit. So, there is, you know, mixed use there as well. But this is the first time we've explored this. We've gotten some requests from our customers to have some live music, maybe some trivia, maybe a DJ.
How loud do you think it would be?
So, we've got 2,500 square feet, it's a low ceiling, maybe 1,500 square feet and 40 seats. It's not going to be anything loud, I wouldn't have a large band, maybe a one or two band, you know, pretty, pretty...
Low-key?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was hoping you'd say.
We close at 9:00 typically.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think with our liquor license, we can stay open until 10:00, but we've never gone past that.
Okay. All right.
No, go ahead. The hours of operation seem reasonable. Any other questions?
Which is the closest distance to the next, even if we were to entertain Mr. Brown's premise about the people across the street? Those are the closest abutters?
No, so they're across 28. There is a, next to me is a plumber and has two units above it.
But they're not here clearly to oppose it either.
They're not here. I'm on good terms with them, they come in and get food regularly. So, you know, we are, we are not dependent on this license. We're like to be an important part of that community out of Wacoit. So, if it were problematic, you know, we survive on takeout mostly, but we'd love to have a place where people could come and, you know, hear some music, so.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
The way it was described, I would be comfortable with that type of arrangement, I don't think it's going to cause a problem.
Let me just ask if there's anyone here to comment. Mr. Patrick?
Just have a question. I live on 24 Collins Road, I'm not directly a budding, but...
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Matthew Patrick, 24 Collins Road, Precinct 7. Just curious as to whether it's going to be amplified music. And as to nobody being here to comment, well, it's only by luck that I'm here to comment. Not everybody's looking in the newspaper for the announcements. So, that's my question, is it going to be amplified?
So, never having done any sort of entertainment, we've been there three years, I suppose amplified means plugged into any type of speaker, I would want to be able to say, yes, it's going to be amplified, as opposed to acoustic. We might have a DJ, somebody suggested a bring-your-own vinyl night, you know, an old-fashioned record type of night, but, so, yeah, I'd like to be able to amplify the music. But, again, we're not looking to do large bands or anything like that, so, yes?
Thank you. Mr. Fenneren?
Madam Chair, when it's appropriate, I can comment on the abutter notice procedure we're following.
Okay.
Mark Fenneren, Grand Ave. Just a little history again. The prior place to that, Grill 520, had an entertainment license, they had bands and DJs, and half the people in the place lived across the street in the motel. And just another, as far as background noise, I mean, the highways out there, the cars are going by. I've been there several times for pizza when they had entertainment, and I never, I don't recall any exceptional loud noise outside the building, and a lot of it is constructional. Some of these buildings are spilt like, built like a speaker box. I think an example of that is next door. But, anyway, like I said, they did it before, and I don't recall ever having any complaints because I knew the owner, actually, the two previous owners.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneren. Mr. Johnson Staub, do you want to speak to the process of notifying abutters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just, we're following the same procedure that's used by the zoning board of appeals. And I would quote you the number of feet, but I don't know it off the top of my head, Mr. Zelinski may or may not know from his ZBA experience. But we do have a list of, in your packet, showing the abutters that were notified, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. There are some 25 abutters that were notified in this instance. And then the process in terms of who was notified, it is the legal owner of those properties, and that's just because that's all we can easily obtain.
Yeah, it's 300 feet.
Yeah, we have it listed as 300 feet, so.
Anyone else for comment in this hearing? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Conversation among the, amongst the board?
Given the testimony of the owner on the limited loudness, and he seems like he's conscientious about it, I would say, I would move approval, as requested, for the hours of 4:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, let's move on to an application for a Sunday entertainment license, Olive Restaurants Inc., doing business as Shiverick's Cafe and Bar, to be exercised at 285 Main Street in Falmouth, and we've got 10 minutes.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183(a) of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto that Olive Restaurants Inc., doing business as Shiverick's Cafe and Bar, has applied for a Sunday entertainment license located at 285 Main Street, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, January 9, 2023, at 6:45 on the above application. Per order of Select Board publication date, Friday, December 30, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Price. Is the applicant here?
Hello.
How are you?
Hello.
Introduce yourself for us, please.
Ilya Gregoriades.
Questions from the board?
Have you had any entertainment yet?
One night.
How'd it go?
Every day's an entertaining day.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
No.
I think, comments?
Well, I guess the question I have is, how close are the nearest residents to your establishment?
I never measured how many feet it is. Within 40, 50 feet?
50? That's not very far, and that's...
Within that.
Well, we just approved them for all the other nights of the week with no limitations.
Exactly.
But this is to 1:00 a.m. in the morning.
Yep. Well, the other ones were too, but this is Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday morning.
I don't think the musicians are going to be there, I'm not there.
I mean, I think it would be easier for me to vote to approve it if I knew that it was more like 11:00 p.m. and not stretching into the wee hours of the morning.
No, no, it's not going to be until 1:00 in the morning. I've got to get up in four hours to come back there, I'm not going to stay there until 1:00.
So, are you willing to bring the time limit down to 11:00 p.m.?
To 11:00 p.m.?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, sorry, wait a minute.
Yes, closing the hearing.
Oh, close the hearing.
We just closed the hearing. That's okay.
Sorry.
Approve or amend it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good luck. Okay.
And I'll just state for the record, I think it's pretty clear, but the amendment is 11:00 p.m. is the end time rather than 1:00 a.m., which is on the application.
Thank you.
Right.
Application for a new all-alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverages hotel license Wagner Hospitality Management LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn, be exercised at 291 Jones Road in Falmouth.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Wagner Hospitality Management LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn Falmouth, has applied for an all-alcoholic beverages hotel license to be exercised at 291 Jones Road, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, January 9, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. on the above application. Per order of Select Board publication date, Friday, December 30, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
You are the applicant, please introduce yourself.
My name is Wagner Kitanidin, General Manager, Holiday Inn, Falmouth. I'm here to apply for a full all-alcohol liquor license. We, I was here before you, a couple months ago, applying for a transfer of the liquor license. Previous owner, but not able to obtain a signature of consent, the LLC was disbanded, just couldn't get that. So, I'm trying to apply for a new vehicle, same hours, same location, same staff, same setting, just to achieve the formship.
Questions from the board?
So, sir, would you be the manager then?
Yes, sir.
And now, will you be on site often? Because I see your New Hampshire address, I wonder...
Yes, I'm spending the week here, as is for the whole since we bought it in August.
Okay.
It's about 50 hours a week, sometimes more.
I see.
But that's, that's what it requires, yeah.
So, you just stay at the hotel and...
I actually stay in Yarmouth, and we have a property in Yarmouth, I stay here sometimes.
Okay.
Go back and forth.
Okay.
But I mostly be here because it's seasonal, Yarmouth is closed.
I see. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I have a question about tip certification. I assume you are tip-certified and trained?
Yes, sir.
Do you have managers that are also tip-certified?
We do have a restaurant manager that's certified. Everybody that works in there behind the bar, I want a tip certification. Bartenders, hotel waiters, they all kind of have a tip certification, very important.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to speak? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I don't have any more questions. I would say I would move approval unless there's anybody else, is anything else?
Second, Mr. Brown's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, our last hearing, vehicle for hire regulations request to increase taxi fare. And we have 10 minutes for the hearing.
The Falmouth Select Board, under the authority of the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, Section C3-7, subsection H, as reported, the town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on the request of Falmouth Taxi, a licensed taxi operator, to consider an increase in the rate of fare in section 28056a of the Vehicle for Hire Regulations. Present fee, for the first two-fifths of a mile, a minimum charge of $3, and for each additional one-fifth of a mile, 65 cents. Proposed fee, for the first two-fifths of a mile, a minimum charge of $3, and for each additional one-fifth of a mile, 75 cents. The hearing will be held on Monday, January 9, 2023, at 6:45 in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, MA. Per order of Select Board publication date, Friday, December 30, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Price.
I'm Adam E. and I own Falmouth Taxi. And just to start off with, that's a mistake made in the pricing. Here is my original proposal to Diane Davidson in the email to her, and she said there should not be two-fifths of a mile starting. I want to leave the drop, that's called, the very first part, at $3, and not have to increase it to like 450, you know, just to cover two-fifths of a mile. So, I asked her just to leave it at 3, but take out the two-fifths of the mile in the beginning drop. So, when she proposed that, you can see in my email directly to her what I did ask for, and it does not include two-fifths of a mile.
So, the fare to be taken, do you mind if I read your email, sir?
Yeah, no, go ahead, please.
Okay. The fare to be taken by or paid to the owner, driver, or other persons having charge of any licensed vehicle for hire classified as a taxicab shall be per the following schedule: a minimum charge of $3, and for each additional one-fifth of a mile, 75 cents. In addition to the mileage charge of $3, a charge for a time in transit may be charged at the rate of 60 cents per minute from the pickup point to the drop-off point.
Right. Every meter has time waiting, time in traffic, you bring somebody to the store, you sit there and wait, time runs. I mean, that's just how meters work, so. And right now, I believe it's, I want to say it's like $22 an hour. That was from 15 years ago, when the last approval came in from here. So, times have changed a little bit, and that would kind of bump it up. If a driver actually had to sit in front of a store and wait for a passenger for an hour, he'd at least get minimum wage. I'm sure they'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we can amend it.
It would have to be amended, even if the public hearing is supposed to be as well.
Yeah, that, my understanding is, once the hearing has been advertised, it does not restrict the board to consider changes to the hearing proposal.
Okay, great. Questions from the board?
I guess it's justified, it's 14 years since the last rate increase.
Yeah, it's almost, I think it's 15, actually. I mean, Paul Moore got it a long time ago.
Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Conversation amongst the board?
Well, taxi services are absolutely critical for people that don't have regular transportation that they own, so, I think this is a vital service that we need to make sure people have available to them, so, supportive of this.
As far as I know, I have a bigger discount than AARP for our seniors here on disability, it's 25 percent. You tell me anybody that does that in this town.
Yeah, go ahead, that's, hearing's closed. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson, anything else?
No, that's, no, that's my only comment.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair, could I just ask, I'm not totally clear on what we're voting on, I'm maybe the only one sitting at this table that isn't, but perhaps reading again what the proposal is?
Yeah, I think, and that's what I would move approval of, is the conditions that...
Is what's written here.
Yeah, let's correct that.
Do you want me to read it again?
It changes that when you first pick them up, you get the $3, you don't have to go that first two-fifths of a mile.
Exactly.
And it changes the waiting time from 50 cents to 60 cents, or it's a 10-cent increase, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll read it. Okay. Shall be per the following schedule: a minimum charge of $3, and for each additional one-fifth of a mile, 75 cents. In addition to the mileage charge of $3, a charge for time in transit may be charged at the rate of 60 cents per minute from the pickup point to the drop-off point. That's what you would be voting. And I can also give this email back to Mr. Johnson Staub, make sure that we have it correct.
And just so you guys understand how that does work, initially, the way the meters are set up right now, so it starts at $3.
Sir, the hearing's closed, so I can't take any more comment. So...
We could reopen it if we're not clear, though.
If you want to reopen.
If we need to.
But I think, I think, I think it's clear, it's $3, two-fifths of a mile, 75 cents, and if they're waiting, it's 60 cents a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. Then I have a motion to approve that new...
There is, there is one more typo on C, a charge for waiting time may be charged at the rate of $26, and then in parentheses it says 36 per hour?
Yeah, we're, I think, we're not using this. I think we're, we're getting, I think we're going just by this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're changing.
We're gonna, what you're voting, but that's a good point. What you're voting is what I just read in the email.
And this is deleted completely. Okay.
It's amended.
Got it.
Yes, I move approval of the amended proposed fee schedule.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good luck.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, let's move into business. Vote to approve the borrowing anticipation note sale. Mr. Johnson Stubb, do you want to add anything additional to what you've shared?
No, I think, I think that pretty much covered it. So we, we need a, a motion to approve the, or I should say, we need a, a vote from the board to approve the motion as drafted by bond counsel, which is in your package.
This is a very long page and a half.
Yes, so you don't have to read it.
Oh, I don't.
Don't. Just as long as the motion that you vote references that you're approving that written motion in your package.
Could I just ask briefly, I don't want to drag it into a long conversation, but what, it's not clear to me what makes this offer the most advantageous when I look at the, the sheets. What is the determining factor that makes this the best choice?
The net interest, the short answer to your question is the net interest rate.
Okay. And the premium is less important?
So the, it's the combination of the two. So they, in order to get to the final answer, with the assistance of our bond advisors, Hilltop Securities, we do an analysis of what's the premium, what's the, what's the interest rate, and that results in a net interest, which combines those two, those two factors to determine what the, what the most advantageous package is.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I move approval as written in the vote of the Select Board in our package.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going to vote to adopt the 2024 budget and submit it to the Finance Committee, and we have 15 minutes for this. I know that there are people here to speak to, to this budget, and I will give you five minutes if you would come up to the podium.
$2,000 a minute.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And I'm going to refer to what I wrote to the Select Board on December 22. And if people don't have a copy, I made copies. People, do you have it?
You can bring it back in here.
There's it is.
I'll see it.
Just so you know, the only thing I changed is I bolded and moved up a paragraph from the end because that's going to be pretty much what I'm going to be speaking to.
Can I ask for an introduction?
Oh, I am Alice Kachimba. I am the current Chair of the Falmouth Cultural Council, and I am here to ask you to include a line item of $10,000 in the town's fiscal '24 operating budget for the Falmouth Cultural Council. With your vote tonight, something's, with your vote tonight, this budget becomes your budget, and the council would really like your recommendation and approval of this line item. Only when it becomes, only when it goes through town meeting in April does it become the town's budget, and that's why we're asking you tonight to approve this line item. I appreciated Peter Johnson Stubb's phone call to me on January, on December 19. He said he did not recommend the council's line item because he felt he had to be consistent and fair, since he also denied many department heads' requests. I told him I understood his position, and I do. But a $10,000 line item for the council is not the same kind of request from other department heads. These funds go to the council in order to pass through to provide arts and cultural programming. I did see on FCTV, Mr. Johnson Stubb's presentation on the budget, and the most similar request is the $14,000 line item for the East Falmouth Library Branch to be open on Saturdays from 9 to 1. And Peter called it a modest investment, which is exactly what this request would be. A modest investment in the arts by the town because it generates revenue for the town in terms of increased tourism and adds to the town's local revenue. As you remember, Arts Alive and how vibrant Main Street was that, those days. Going to fast forward, if anybody wants to ask me a question about what fully, what happened to the $10,000 that we got as a one-time allocation, I can tell you, it's also in the Falmouth Enterprise as a press release about where the money went. And I can also explain to you why fully funded is very important and what difference this one-time allocation made. But I'll, I'll wait for you to ask me those questions if you have to have it. The basic thing I would like to say, and I'm, I'm just going to stop for a second to say, everybody probably remembers the astounding amendment that actually got us more than what we asked for by Robert Donahue. But I want you to remember early on, Peter Cook rose from, in support of this amendment, and he said, "My son was born with autism. He was asked to perform at Arts Alive. It meant the world to him." He expressed his heartfelt support for this funding. When Peter Cook read the Friday's Enterprise article, he immediately wrote to us and said, "What would he, what could he do to support it?" So, it was only two months ago that this came through town meeting. I'm sure you also remember Sandy Fineman Silva, who asked that the funding be made permanent, and that David Vera responded, "It could only be done at April Town Meeting through a line item in the operating budget." There were two ways to get this done. Tonight, you can include the council's request and add a line item to the town's operating budget, or, we don't prefer to do it this way, or the council can submit another petition article that would be voted at the April Town Meeting. I'm just, excuse me, it's the carpets. Allergies. Town meeting is the, thank you, Nancy, is the democratic representational body to whom the Select Board reports. Please remember their support for these funds at the November Town Meeting. Please include a line item of $10,000 for the council, Cultural Council. Saying yes to the Cultural Council's request sends the right message that the town government is listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Comments?
I have a question. The funds that were appropriated at this most recent town meeting, when would those funds be available to the Cultural Council?
They were available immediately because they were free cash.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question as well. Can another committee or council come and ask to put a line item in the town's budget?
So, I mean, yes, I suppose any committee could ask the, the town manager and/or the Select Board for a line item in the budget. Yes.
Thank you.
I would just draw a distinction. The article that was approved, and it may be a distinction without a difference, but the article that was approved was not technically an amendment to the budget. It was simply an appropriation from free cash. So there does need to be, if there are going to be, you know, any, any article that's brought forward for funding needs to identify the funding source.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, this is another, another question. So this is going to be a line item that will just automatically show up from year to year unless modified throughout the year. And so this would come out of the revenues of the town, essentially out of the certified free cash, but as an allocation to the budget. Is that the way it's going to work?
So, right. If the board were to, to act on the request of the Cultural Council and put this in the budget, then it would be funded from raise and appropriate. So, yes, it would just be funded from regular revenues and be part of the budget.
Right.
I would say Town Meeting did, was very supportive of it, and it is a modest request, and it seems to be doing a lot of good, and it does generate revenue, apparently, according to all reports. Arts Alive, she mentioned. I, I think I'm supportive of it.
I, I definitely don't disagree that it is, it is modest. My, my main concern is if we're setting precedent for other committees, when, you know, we, we review the budget, and I'm confident in the way the budget is put together, and maybe this is something we can consider for the next budget. But my main concern is setting, potentially setting precedent, if other, if other committees can do the same thing.
Well, other committees have, and I, I know two committees that do plan to be asking for budget changes in the future. So, I mean, it, it does happen, and it, it's been happening.
Mr. Patterson?
To me, the question is, you know, does this add value to the town? And is this an appropriate thing to put into our budget on a, on an annual basis? And for me, the answer is yes. I mean, it's, it is a, you know, adds character to the town. It, it adds to the various activities. I think our, our music students here in the, in the Falmouth Public Schools, as well as in the private school, you know, benefit from all of this. And this town certainly values its culture and, and arts. So I think this is an appropriate addition to our budget.
There is an alternative, though. It becomes an article yearly, voted on by Town Meeting, correct?
They can do that.
I know that she didn't. She said that that would be her second choice. But there is a, there is an alternative to, to doing that.
To the being a line item.
And creating precedent.
And why would, why would you suggest that approach?
Because you've gave very articulate reasons why you believe this is important. I think that that presentation should be made on, on Town Meeting floor, and if it's that important, it's not that hard to put it in an article and explain it yearly and appropriate that, that money without, without running into, well, you did it for them. Why can't you do it for us? Everybody can make an argument for more money. While I agree with you, I think if it's that important, then it should be important enough to be able to put as an article that yearly Town Meeting, or at least re-describe it the next time so we're not creating a precedent-setting revenue stream for others.
My reservation is that what it's doing is putting the onus back onto these groups, which are not necessarily paying attention to the annual budget, to remember that they have to submit an article every year to get it in there. And I, I really don't think that's the right way to do this. I think if we feel this is of value to the town, it should be an automatic renewal unless an exception is made, and, you know, by the, by the Finance Committee or by the Select Board, because they don't think that that money is being invested properly or effectively for the purposes that we allocated it for. So I, I just don't want to put the onus back onto these groups, which are public citizens who aren't part of staff, who don't do this, review this on a regular basis, and it doesn't, it's not necessarily an action item that they would always have at this time of the year, every year.
I respect your opinion. I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
I, I also, I get a little bit caught up in that we, there are so many things that we have said no to from other departments. I get a little bit stuck there because I do believe in the arts. I do believe in music. I do think it has huge value to this town. And yet I'm stuck only because we have said no to so many other wants and needs. So that's where I'm stuck.
I, I felt like we got a strong message from Town Meeting, that they were very supportive, in fact, increasing it, and it was unanimously approved. And I think that the moderator gave us a, a heads-up that if you want to do this, bring it to the Select Board. If they support it, they should put it in the budget. And I think that that's where we're at. So, to, to go back to Town Meeting every year, I don't think is the correct way. I understand your, your point, but I, I think that we should decide if we support it, I think we should vote it. But, that's my opinion.
Do you want to make a motion?
I do.
Oh, do we have a public comment? Mr. Finley?
Town Meeting is kind of the Congress and the, you know, budgeting side of our town. This woman did a very good job with her initial petitioner's article. It was supported by Town Meeting quite overwhelmingly. She got the first one done. I think going back again and asking to make it permanent in front of Town Meeting is the proper way to do it. I, I highly doubt that they're going to tell her no. And I think setting the precedent that you can just come in here and ask the selectmen for money, although, I mean, in certain circumstances, it's probably the right, most direct thing to do. I, I think she should just modify it and bring it back to Town Meeting again, and I pretty much guarantee you that they're going to give it to her. My opinion.
But it won't be permanent?
No, she can ask for it as a permanent.
No, it won't.
This is the only way it becomes permanent.
No, they can, she can, she can put the funding source in the article and ask it to be permanent. Is that not correct?
That's what she did last year, but he said if you want to make it permanent, you have to put it in the budget.
Mr. Johnson Stubb?
Don't you ask to put it in the budget through a Town Meeting article and make it permanent?
Go ahead.
If the suggestion is, could the Town Meeting, sorry, could the operating budget article be amended on Town Meeting floor to increase the operating budget? Yes, that could be done. They would have to name a, you know, they would have to identify the funding source. But there could be an amendment on Town Meeting floor to modify the budget.
So it would be basically to amend the budget, that it would be in there?
Right.
And it would be reoccurring?
Annually.
Annually.
Right, right.
And then Town Meeting gave it to them the first time. I think to make it permanent would be their choice as well, but...
So that would be, they'd only have to do that once, they would be...
Yeah, right.
Operating budget amendment.
Comes a line item.
Yeah, if it comes as a line item. Yeah.
Why didn't we do that last time?
It was a petition article to...
I mean, are you going to adjust the article as it's on the floor, or is it, you're going to accept it the way it's presented? This is the time to amend it and adjust it for further success in annual. That's the way to do it, and it cleans, it cleans it all up and, and takes away, pardon me, it takes away all of your, your reservations. And if somebody wanted to do that on Town Meeting floor, it gives them the avenue to be able to do that. It gives them a menu on how to do that.
And then Town Meeting says, "Do it."
Okay.
So I...
How's that sound?
I'm appealing, appealing to your self-interest. If it's going to get done, let's have your support to do it. What we don't need is anything divisive. Yes, we can jump through another hoop and go to nine precinct meetings. It was a great education. I enjoyed it, actually. But I do think that for the Select Board to become tone deaf to Town Meeting right now is not a good idea. And you're concerned about the precedent? I'm concerned about another precedent, which is, somebody got up and said they actually deserved more money. And if you ignore that, I don't think that's how government should work, by frankly.
I don't think we're ignoring it.
I don't think we're ignoring it, and I certainly don't think that we're tone deaf in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I didn't mean to...
Firstly. Secondly, we're talking about process. What is the best process way to get this done and to get it reoccurring? So I don't think anybody's disagreeing with supporting it. We're talking about a different process. Am I correct?
Yeah, I feel about it.
Yeah. I, I, and I agree that it's not, that the board isn't supportive or tone deaf. It's that we, we're having a discussion about what is the best process to make sure that, that it happens, and that we do listen, again, to Town Meeting. So I don't want you to come away, I don't, I haven't heard anyone say that they're not supportive.
No, but the concern about the precedent?
Well, we're wrestling with the process.
I appreciate that, and perhaps tone deaf is merely picking up on the musical metaphor that was already here. But in truth, how concerned people like Peter Cook, and he's not the only one, would be to have Town Meeting be extended more for a procedural strategy that really, I think, has some negative effect that I want you to consider before you decide. And obviously, whatever you decide, we just want to be a team, is really what I'm saying.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Procedurally, though, they would have to get a petitioner's article in by this Friday, right?
Go ahead.
I'm sure. So they're, they're, not necessarily. It depends on what approach they take. If the approach is to amend the operating budget, then there's no article necessary, because there's already an article to prove the operating budget. The moderator goes through the budget line by line and asks for holds and discussion. So it would be a motion to amend an existing article, not necessarily a petition article. Now, there needs to be a Town Meeting member, you know, to make that motion. And on another note that we haven't discussed, our recommendation to put it in the budget is still subject to Town Meeting approval. So if we are supportive of it and we do recommend it, it still has to be approved at the Town Meeting.
As we were on the initial...
That's a good point, though. Yeah.
I mean, if we're really supportive of it, we're probably going to say so at the Town Meeting.
Right.
Why not say so now by supporting its inclusion?
By putting it into the draft budget. By putting it into the draft budget.
That's a good point.
I would make a motion that we include the $10,000 request from the cultural council, include it in the budget for consideration by town meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got it.
Are you in sales?
Thank you, Alice, for all of your work.
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. That means we can do community outreach, community engagement, getting more applications.
You probably still should show up at town meeting if somebody says no.
Absolutely.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, vote to adopt the multi-hazard mitigation plan?
Did we finish the budget?
Madam Chair, we have the rest of the budget.
Here I am, all excited that it's approved. Let's just go.
10,000 down, 1.5 million to go.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Questions, comments on the budget? Boy, I tried to push that one, didn't I?
I just want to say I thought the budget was very well done, as usual. And I thought the presentation was really clear, well-presented, and understandable to, you know, people who are not necessarily mathematicians. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
I do have a question, and I had actually already asked Peter this last week, I think. And that's, one of the indicators that I know, when I took the MMA training about budgeting at the municipal level, is how much of the budget goes to salaries versus non-salaries? And this is the operating budget, not the capital budget. So I asked Peter, if he would, to at least find out what that is because this, sort of the benchmark that was recommended to the members that participated in that training was like 80% salaries and the other 20%. So where do we stand, Peter? Did you look that up or have our finance folks do that?
Yes, Ed Centio looked at the budget and made that calculation and came up with 52% is salaries. Now, that is pure salary. We didn't load the benefits into that.
Oh, okay. And I'm sure that number included benefits.
Well, it would still be under, well, under 80% if we loaded the benefits in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, concerns about the budget?
No, I just appreciate the fact that we've talked about it a few times. I feel like this year I'm more knowledgeable about the budget than I have been in previous years.
I agree. I didn't have any questions this year for last year.
Well, and I think also it speaks to Peter's work on the budget, but it also speaks to the board's willingness to have more meetings about the budget on Saturdays. And I think that was really helpful, to go a step at a time, so...
And that early meeting to get a head start on thinking about the process when we were early on was very helpful.
Agreed.
I would move approval of the budget and sending to the finance committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
May I move on now, Mr. Johnson? Okay. Vote to adopt the multi-hazard mitigation plan.
So this is essentially, it is quite a document. This is a document that the board received a presentation on previously, and it has been approved by FEMA. But the process requires after FEMA gives its approval, it was in draft form when the board voted it the first time, so a confirming vote is required.
I don't see any reason not to approve it after FEMA approves it.
Was that a positive vote?
I would motion to approve, yeah.
I appreciate the fact that they've now also identified the dam and culvert failure and the freshwater quality as hazards to us.
Those are the updates.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second, Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation, Cape Light Compact update on electric rates. And I've slated you for 15 minutes.
Start it here.
I got you, Dan.
Thanks.
I'm Matt Patrick, Precinct 7. I'm your representative to the Cape Light Compact. And I got to say, St. Peter has a special place for former selectmen when we pass on, at least I hope, hope he does. It gives us special compensation because it's great to see democracy at work, but you guys earn your pay, that's for sure.
Our pay.
You didn't notice?
The Cape Light Compact is a municipal aggregator, and it negotiates the terms and provisions of our power supply contracts on our behalf, every one of the residents of Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard. And I'm here to introduce Maggie Downey, who's the administrator of the compact, and to tell you how, show you how dedicated she is. She's here doing work and waiting, waiting to be heard by you folks. She could go anywhere in the country to get a job. She's been with us since the beginning, and we are very fortunate indeed to have her. I have one pet issue that I want to get across to people, to the public, that you're going to hear a lot about mini splits and heat pumps. These things have come a long way, and they are now up to 500% efficient. That means they can take your kilowatt hour and multiply that times five, and that's the value you'll get in heat. So it's much more efficient than any other thing, any other appliance, gas or oil. The best they can do is about 95%. That's super efficient. So you're going to hear a lot about these heat pumps. These are older ones. I mean, they were the ones that you have here. But the new ones are much better. They work in temperatures down to minus 30 degrees. And they're the way we're going to get renewable energy into the grid to knock off all the fossil fuels that we're using to heat homes and buildings. It's going to be a $12,000 subsidy coming from the feds. You can find out more about this by going to the Cape Light Compact. I know energy is expensive. It's the only thing we can do. It's going to get more expensive. The only thing we can do is to use less of it and use it wisely. So with that said, here's...
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone happy to be here, which had better news. This is probably the hardest presentation I've had to give to boards of selectmen and town council in a long time. So can I just page you down? Yes. So Matt's already talked about who the Cape Light Compact is. For the audience, Cape Light Compact are all 15 towns and six towns on Martha's Vineyard, so 21 public entities administering ratepayer-funded energy efficiency programs here on the Cape and Vineyard, as well as, as Matt said, negotiating the terms and conditions of our power supply contract. I think you also said it a nice way. I'm old, dur. Been around a long, been around a long time.
You're not alone.
So I'm going to get right into it. I know you've got a busy agenda, so I will skip. This is, what I'm here to talk about are the very high rates that we are all facing, electric rates regardless of whether you're on the Cape Light Compact supply or basic service with the investor on utility ever source. These are the highest electric rates I've seen since we began. That's over 21 years of negotiating power supply contracts and monitoring wholesale energy markets. These rates are reflective of what is happening in the world, and that's what I want to talk about on my next slide. So I put these up here just for comparison. Any good news, the Cape Light Compact's rates are competitive. They're lower than the utilities' basic service rates. There are some people who are on fixed-price contracts. The municipalities are all on a 8.7 cent electric rate, which runs through July of 2024. So, but most of our small businesses and residential customers are not on long-term contracts. They are on either Cape Light Compact supply or basic service. So what's happening and what's driving our winter prices? What's driving winter prices is natural gas, the cost of natural gas. 45% of electricity in New England is generated with combined-cycle natural gas plants. Natural gas, the price of natural gas has increased nearly 300% since this time last year when we set rates. And because we rely so much on natural gas to produce electricity, that is why we are seeing, not only us, but everyone is seeing high electricity rates this winter.
Not to mention heating your house rates.
Pardon?
I say not to mention heating your house rates.
Not to heating, your gas rates have gone up, and not to heating, oil is up and propane is up. And so what's happening and what's driving this? We are actually, the infrastructure in New England was built specifically, pipelines for natural gas were built for heating homes. They were never intended to be delivering natural gas for the production of electricity. So as we, doing the right thing with climate, have shut down our coal, our oil-fired plants, we did shut down Pilgrim, we are behind in the installation of renewables. We struggled and did not get approval for Canadian Hydro. I want to put aside whether you like the technologies or not, or pro or con. So we have a shortage. So we're relying heavily on a fuel, natural gas, that now is competing internationally. We rely, because those pipelines don't accommodate the enough natural gas, we rely on something called LNG, liquefied natural gas, which comes in by tanker and historically has met that winter need. Because LNG, we are on a global energy market, LNG tankers are being sent, they're basically being rerouted as they come from a terminal for the highest price and are going overseas because of the war in Ukraine, and Europe is not purchasing their natural gas from Russia. They are purchasing it from North America, the United States. So we are paying prices, European prices, for our LNG, as well as things I listed on my slide. Our natural gas storage levels are low. Winter, winter prices are always high. People are afraid of polar vortex. That's a little bit, I want to, I'll say this now for those, the Cape Light Compact rates are set, they're set for the next six months. If the winter stays mild, the way we are, the way we've been the last, you will see energy markets come down, and there will be prices that are lower than the Cape Light Compacts. So customers can watch the market. We have a great website that tells you, you know, helps you find a competitive supplier, what to look for if you decide that you want to choose another supplier beside the Cape Light Compact. We're here to help customers, if that's what you so desire, in choosing a competitive supplier. Again, you're not going to see prices that we had last year, but you could find a rate that's beneath the Cape Light Compacts as you progress through the winter. If the winter turns cold, you know, and we start to see a cold snap, that will disappear. I always encourage people, if you are looking to choose a supplier, there's a couple of tips I have in here. Never give your contract, your electric account number over the phone. Make sure you get a contract in writing in your hand before you agree to anything, and you read the terms and conditions. If you have any questions, the Cape Light Compact staff are here to help. So that's if you're choosing a supplier. But what you can do as an electric and gas customer in these high rates is to check to see if you were on the right electric rate. Does everybody know that there's a discount rate for income-eligible gas and electric? Does anybody know that? Hey, somebody in the audience knew that. That's great, and it's significant. So the first thing you need to do, it's a 36% discount. It's going up to over 40% in July, was just approved. Check your rate code. Check your income. It's not about your net, it's about what your net income is. It isn't about your assets. There are many, many of our residents who are retirees living on limited incomes. Doesn't matter if they have, you know, a very big house, drive. It's about your net income. You may be eligible for a discount, so check from the gas company and the electric company as well. You can sign up for budget billing to help spread out these high winter prices. You can also sign up for fuel assistance. But the most important thing, and I'm going to show you the next slide, is about, I'm glad this is part of your packet, this information is on our website and I'll be on your website, is to check your income and find out if you fall, it's the income-eligible category, to see if you're eligible for either the gas discount or the electric discount. So again, if you, neighbor, family member, you know somebody who fits within this category, they are eligible for a discount on their bill. The utilities are required to put you on this rate. You need to call them and disclose that I am income-eligible. They are required to immediately put you on this rate on the next billing cycle. Then they send you the paperwork, and of course, you are required to submit proof and evidence of income. But you can get on this rate immediately by contacting your electric, ever source, your distribution company, or National Grid, the gas company. But as Matt started to talk about, the first step that we can all do, you know, the cheapest kilowatt hour is the kilowatt hour you don't use. So the first step, in addition to checking to making sure you're on the right rate, is to sign up for an energy assessment, a home energy assessment, if you haven't had one, to make sure that your house and businesses are efficient as possible, they're weatherized, they're insulated, that your heating system is functioning and operating properly regardless of how you heat your home. All of those fuels will be examined. And then I just have some basic energy-saving tips for your homes. Again, set your thermostat at 68 degrees. You can set it and forget it. You don't need to be going up and down. It's a comfortable temperature. Heat rises. Lots of our homes have ceiling fans. We only sometimes think that people turn them on in the warm weather, but actually, this is a great time to make sure that your heat is circulating throughout the house properly. You turn them on a clockwise direction to help circulate warm air. And if you haven't, if you have home energy assessment, if you haven't switched out all your lights to LEDs, please make sure that you do. Again, not only are they inefficient, but LEDs provide a nice warmer temperature light. Make sure your water heater is set to 120 degrees. And again, these are all things that will be reviewed in your home energy assessment, but these are also easy steps that you can do yourself. Size your humidifier for your space and keep the setting as low as possible this time of year. We have rebates for all, for de-midifiers and other Energy Star equipment. All of this information can be found on the Cape Light Compact website. And if you have any questions, you know, we're right here, our offices are in Yarmouth. Give us a call. We'll help walk you through and navigate that. And again, just for all those homes, and even adults, teenagers, children, it does matter when you leave, how many homes you walk in, and there are wires and chargers hanging out of every outlet available. That's called vampire load. Yes, it doesn't use a lot of electricity, but it adds up when you've got several children and adults with every electric device plugged in and they leave their charger there. It's still using energy. So again, some simple, common sense practices. You can also purchase an advanced power strip. Set it up to your entertainment center, television. It powers everything down, will keep your internet running. But again, it's only, electricity is only being used for those appliances that are critical. If you have a fireplace and you don't use it, your fireplace is basically a giant hole in your house letting in and out air. There are chimney balloons. It's basically a balloon. You can get one online. It inserts in the fireplace, so it forms a tight seal to prevent cold air from coming in and other drafts. Close to damper as well if you're not using it. You can put a chimney balloon in there. Obviously, if you're using your fireplace, these are for people who don't, for whatever reason, they have a fireplace and they're not using it several months of the year. We get older, we don't want to deal with wood anymore, but we still have a fireplace. You can take it out and deflate it as well if you want an occasional fire. Again, wash full loads of laundry. This includes dishwashers, clothes washers, and clothes dryers. So I know I went through a lot of information very fast. I'm cognizant of your time. I put our contact information, and now I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
That was awesome, Chris. It was really good, actually.
I have a question about the weatherization program. I was under the impression that, I guess the program changes occasionally, but I thought that insulation and stuff was done for free regardless. Is that limited?
So the technology and weatherization definitely changes. There is no cap. We still pay 75% of the insulation job. They can be spray foam insulation. Many, many years ago, we didn't do spray foam, so that type of insulation has evolved, and spray foam insulation is eligible for, based on, all of that is based on what your home looks like and can it be done.
And can renters still...
Renters can, so if you're income-eligible, if I go back to that, renters are definitely eligible, and we will cover 100% of the insulation, weatherization, if you're a renter. We just need your landlord's permission, but it's at no cost to a renter. It's also, if you're income-eligible, we will cover 100%. It's also if you're income-eligible, we will cover a hundred percent of the cost of the weatherization, as well as replacement of your heating system and several of the appliances.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Patterson?
Just an observation I've made, LCD TVs, if you leave them on, if you put your hand over the top, you can feel the the heat coming out of them. And that's why I think a power strip makes a lot of sense, because that's what we do. We just simply, when we're finished with a TV, we'll hit the power so it cuts it off so it doesn't continue to consume electricity when nobody's even watching it.
Yes, the MassSave website, which you can get through to on our website or just go directly to MassSave, you can, you'll get it discounted, we buy down the rebates for the power strips. They're also available in all of our local hardware stores.
I think calling MassSave was one of the first things we did when we bought our house here. Oh, I said, calling MassSave was one of the first things we did when we bought our house here.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a have a nice evening and hopefully next time it'll be a nice, better news.
Better news?
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Maggie.
Okay, Veterans Council Committee mission statement. And I, is there anyone here from the Veterans Council? So I'd like to read the statement.
I should be the liaison to that?
I'm sorry?
I should be the liaison to that?
I am, I am the liaison to the Veterans Council, absolutely. So their proposed mission statement is to represent the town of Falmouth in supporting our veterans by providing awareness, resourcing, and collaboration that enable successful outcomes for our community's veteran activities.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, ferry embarkation, the legislation letter. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to look at the two letters that we have, I believe, two towns on the vineyard. Any questions or comments?
I would comment that I'm surprised that two vineyard towns brought this forward, but I think it's good for us as well.
I would just like to comment, just for the public to know that there is an exemption for commuters and students, so these increases are not going to affect commuter passengers. I'd move approval of sending the letter on behalf of support for the increase in fees.
Okay, I have a motion, right?
Second?
A second, motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to Mr. Jeffrey for bringing us this to our attention.
His email was very detailed. Okay, we have a license. Approved application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic common veteran license, Cape Cod Country Club, located at forty-eight Theater Drive in East Falmouth.
You were worried that you were late.
No, I'll pinch, I won't be late.
Right.
Yes, that's right.
Any questions from the board?
I think everything was in the packet that we needed to know.
And did it come across any issues, no objections? I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in.
You as well. Move on to the consent agenda and I will read from the consent agenda and please, if any board member wants to have a conversation, please hold the item. Licenses, approved application for a two-day special, one-day liquor license, Falmouth Theater Guild, located at fifty-eight Highfield Drive, Falmouth, January twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, and January twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. Friday and Saturday service to be six-thirty to nine-thirty PM, Sunday service to be one PM to five PM. Approved application for a common victorial license, Cape Cod Bagel, Inc., located at four nineteen Palmer Avenue in Falmouth. Administrative orders, approved Eversource petition to install a new handhold to be labeled four-three-three H four and to install approximately sixty feet of conduit and cable under Town Road Hudson Street, starting at the existing pole four-three-three-four. This work is necessary to provide electric service to thirty-four Hudson Street. Approved Eversource petition to install approximately fifty feet of conduit and cable under Town Road Allen Ave., starting at the existing pole two-one-four-seven northwesterly to one new handhold twenty-four, two-one-four H seven. This work is necessary to provide electric service to one-oh-one Allen Ave. And vote to accept donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from the Sabaro Baro family of Falmouth to the Fire Rescue Department donation account, along with our thanks. Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Town manager's supplemental report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a revised report that I'd like to distribute to the board. And while I'm passing paper, I will also distribute, I have a working list of potential warrant articles. So the town meeting warrant is, as you may recall, closes this Friday, January thirteenth. So the articles that I've just distributed represent what we have so far. I I put in, place over the petition for petition articles, I don't know. We have heard that there are some petition articles for which signatures are being collected, but none have been formally submitted at this point. But at this point, we are, in terms of town-sponsored articles, we have thirty-two that we're looking at. And I guess I'll just, if it's, if it's agreeable, Madam Chair, I can just read through the articles. We probably shouldn't really discuss them individually tonight, so it's just for your awareness and certainly if board members have questions, they want to reach out to me individually between now and the next meeting, you know, I'd be happy to speak with you or exchange email about about those items. So the first ten articles are really all recurring type of articles, choosing town officers, hearing reports, fixed salaries for elected officials, the fiscal twenty-four operating budget is an article for authorizing. Then we get into authorizing a stabilization fund for fire department wages and expenses, as we discussed on Saturday. Voting and override for fire department wages and expenses, and the amount is yet to be finalized per our discussion on Saturday, excuse me. We have a, to fund the capital improvement stabilization fund, an article to fund other post-employment benefits trust fund, budget transfers for the current fiscal year FYtwenty-three, budget, FYtwenty-three budget appropriations. So if there's a need to supplement the current fiscal year budget, that's a standard article that we have, authorizing the revolving funds. We'll fit in the petition articles somewhere in the middle there. And then we start to get into some articles that are not necessarily recurring standard articles. So I will be presenting to the board a, an article to reauthorize some existing funds that were set aside for wage settlements for union employees so that they could also be used for non-union wage adjustments. We will be proposing a, an article for appropriating funds received from opioid settlements and authorizing those for expenditures in a, in a separate article so that those funds can be carried forward across fiscal years. I have received a request from the school superintendent to reauthorize some existing unspent capital funds for new capital projects. I will be proposing a, an appropriation for the fireworks celebration. There is an allocation in the budget for fifteen thousand dollars for fireworks, that's the same amount that we've had for many, many years. The committee has requested a doubling of that amount because of the cost increases that they are facing. So certainly that's something that we can talk about further, but my proposal here is a free cash supplement for the fireworks celebration. We have consideration of a supplemental appropriation for wastewater treatment facility improvements. Again, this is a, an issue where we have seen tremendous cost escalation and our estimates indicate that the funds, the borrowing authorization approved at the prior April town meeting will not be sufficient for that project. Obviously, that will require significant discussion in terms of what those amounts are and what the, how we might fund them, but for now, a placement article to address that. Speaking of wastewater, the next article is for the next phase, the design and permitting of sewer system extension to the T-Ticket Acapescot area and related sewer system improvements. Next, we have amending the position classification plan for a couple of non-union positions. I will be proposing to, the next article, I'll be proposing to amend the fingerprint-based background checks. This was a bylaw adopted several years ago for all licenses, well, for certain licenses, liquor licenses. And we have found that it is very onerous to do those fingerprints every year for all liquor licenses and other licenses. And I've had conversations with the police department, the folks in my staff, and we have an amendment that would still require fingerprinting for all new licenses. We would also require annual fingerprinting for swap shops and for ice cream, which present a higher level of risk than the concerns presented by other licenses. So that's, that's something that we will be bringing forward.
Did you say ice cream?
Yeah, ice cream trucks.
Trucks.
Yeah, it's a, it's a significant concern.
Exposure to kids.
All right. I didn't think about the truck part.
Yeah, right, not, yeah, not Ben &amp; Jerry's, yep. Let's see, where did that leave me? So the, oh, the, the license for vehicle for hire regulations require a level of insurance that is not realistic. So we're going to ask that we amend that. There is a, Amy Lowell, our wastewater-
One second.
Sure, yes.
Vehicle for hire such as plow, plow, oh. All right, I thought you meant.
Yeah, no, not, not, not backhoes and-
Plow, plows, yeah, all right, thank you, sorry.
The flow-neutral bylaw, Amy Lowell has received feedback from the Department of Environmental Protection that in order to qualify for zero-interest loans, they would like to see us amend our flow-neutral bylaw to clarify the new sewer service areas. So this is not a real substantive change to the bylaw that's being contemplated, it's just updating it to make clear what the sewer service areas are and how that relates to the flow-neutral bylaw. The Board of Health is seeking to, to remove the stable regulations from the bylaws so that the Board of Health could promulgate its own regulations and have the ability to amend those Board of Health regulations rather than have them be addressed in a town meeting bylaw. The next article is from the town clerk, seeking to, to clarify or to adopt a change that makes it clear that Saturdays are not going to count for the legal deadlines for filing matters with the town clerk office, and that pertains to permits that are filed there. Eversource is seeking to, a new easement for Depot Ave. This is the, related to the same project that they received, that town meeting approved easement for already, for the Martha's Vineyard reliability project, so bringing a new electric service cable from the vineyard to the Eversource grid. And they, they have an amendment to, to that infrastructure that requires a different easement. And then there are a number of community preservation committee articles that the committee has submitted for the warrant. One is for the neck, is for the upper Coonamessett River restoration, one is for the Little Pond Conservation Area improvements, there is one for Edward Marks Building exterior improvements, that is a phased project, it's in addition to what has already been approved. There is a request for community preservation funds for ground, a ground penetrating radar survey for the old burying ground. There is an item for the preservation of Francis Wick's house at fifty-five Palmer Ave., as well as historical artwork rehabilitation. There is a community preservation article for the preservation of Highfield Hall. There is a community preservation article for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, so that would be contribution of funds included for the housing fund. And lastly, the administrative expenses for community preservation. Those are the articles we are looking at now. There are changes to that list, we will be filing them formally by Friday, and then we can review them at your next meeting. And I believe, Madam Chair, we're leaning toward holding a meeting on January twenty-third.
To review warrant articles.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful.
I think we are going to need it.
Yeah, and then that way we can have discussions and identify any questions, and if there's additional revision to the articles or questions about whether or not to include them, we'll have one, one more week, one more bite at the apple before the warrant needs to be adopted, needs to be voted by the board on the thirtieth.
And I believe Ms. Scott Price will chair that meeting. And I will call you.
Very good. So that is my lengthy supplemental report on the annual town meeting. The only other item I wanted to address on the supplemental report is some staffing updates. I haven't provided the board with an update in a little bit, so this is an update for the month of, the months of November and December. During those two months, the town filled thirteen full-time position vacancies, and they are for firefighters, a water plant operator, a water department utility maintenance worker, a water department crew leader, a building department administrative clerk, a police department administrative clerk, a circulation librarian, a highway department laborer, and as the board is well aware, the human resources director and the finance director. The, we also had four new vacancies that arose in the last two months. One is an information technology systems analyst, one is an administrative clerk, and I did not list there which department that is, I apologize. One is a firefighter EMT, and there is a data collector, field oppressor, field appraiser, excuse me, in the assessor's office. And then, as we just discussed, the next meeting is going to be January twenty-third. We also have meetings January thirtieth, February thirteenth, and February twenty-seventh. And that concludes my report.
You said the administrative clerk?
Yes.
Do you know who that, what department that is, or you don't know? You said you didn't put it down.
Yeah, I didn't put it down, and I'm not certain what department that is at the moment, I apologize.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Since we're on the topic of staff. You're talking about positions that just became vacant recently, but are there some outstanding positions that, you know, have been chronically difficult to fill and we haven't succeeded to date?
There certainly are, yes, and they're not all listed here. So there are, there are a number in the police department, as we know, and I should actually-
Can you just update us at some point in a future meeting, rather than have you try to remember them all on the spot?
Sure, yeah, so you want a full list of all the vacant positions?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Select board member reports. Reports?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just, it was a light week or two, actually, it was kind of nice to have a break. I did it through Zoom because they restricted, but the Conservation Commission only allows people to do, to attend by Zoom, just because of the increased COVID infection rate. But I just wanted to mention how hard the Conservation Commission works, and I know other committees are similarly, but you know, when you look at the number of site visits that they have to make for all the applications that come before them, I've just been continuing to be impressed- to be impressed with the amount of diligent work that the members of the commission put out, you know, and they meet almost every week, with a very few exceptions throughout the year. So it's, it's a hard-working committee and people that believe in what they're doing to try to make sure that we're protecting our natural resources to the best that they can do. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Brown.
I think I already mentioned the Water Waste Committee that we met last week, and Beach Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, so it has been a little slack for a couple weeks, hasn't it?
Thank goodness.
Nice. I don't have anything clear for the committee.
Um, I don't know if this is a request for you, Peter, or, I've been watching the zoning board meetings, and we've been getting disclosure reports from some of the members, and it seems to be a wide varying target on, on what is allowable for disclosures. Do we have a clear policy on the board, or do we have to revisit? In some cases, it appears there's blanket coverage on disclosures or recusals. And then I just saw one from Mr. Duffy come in that was so succinct and so remote that it added such a great distance between the interpretation that I, I need, I just need some clarification. I don't know where to get that, whether we revisit it here, or you can find that out for me, who makes that decision, but it's, it's just so wide-ranging in the interpretation right now that even, I'm anybody, but I can't, you, you don't know where to pin the dart on it, where, you know, what, what's appropriate and what isn't. So I don't know how we get to the bottom of that explanation, and that's more of a request than a report. I don't know if it goes on, on, on an agenda and we discuss it or revisit it, or we get town council, who's making that decision, what's appropriate and what isn't, to come and explain it so we can ask some questions publicly. I'd just like to know, because when you watch it, it is quite different.
Sure. So it may well be that we want to have town council come in and speak to that issue, but, you know, it's driven by state law, and we get, so you're, you're talking about the conflict of interest disclosure forms that we get from individuals who are serving on boards and committees.
Especially quasi-judicial boards that have appealable cases.
Right, right. And, you know, the, the best practice is for those individuals, before they submit a disclosure, to either work with the State Ethics Commission or town council to make sure that they're in proper form. I have seen a lot of that being done recently. I can't tell you for sure whether, you know, every single one has been vetted by town council, but that's, you know, that's what we would recommend, to try to make sure that they're done appropriately. There, the law is also very, very detailed and very challenging in implementation. The way I've described it is, I thought I fully understood the conflict of interest law 10 years ago, maybe 20 years ago, and then the more I worked with it, the less I realized I actually understood about it, because in application, you know, what, what one person is going to interpret that law, a different, a different attorney, and even I think the different attorneys are going to interpret it differently. And I've worked with both town council and Ethics Commission, so that's where my education came from. This is not a black and white issue.
Well, I, yeah.
I've never heard of a blanket, though.
We just approved one just recently, for the most part.
We need to.
I mean, and we need, that needs to be discussed publicly, but, I mean, and I didn't really notice it or be able to put it in the context until I saw how succinctly Frank Duffy's came in. And, and forgive me for saying, but I kind of grew up in politics on the zoning board, and we kind of grew up with the, you know, when in doubt, recuse, or when in doubt, declare. It's all, because we're talking about the, the language of appearance, it doesn't have to be a court case, but if there's an appearance of it, or could be. So I just need some more clarification as their liaison. I've had members speak about it, I've talked to the administrator about it, and nobody can put their finger on what it is we accept as a policy, and I just, I'd like, just personally, I'd like some, as their liaison, to get some clarification on it, so I know what I'm looking at.
And because we approve them, it might be nice to have a discussion with town council at one of our meetings.
I don't think, do we actually approve them? I thought we just are notified of them in case we feel like it's something we want up.
There, well, there are, there are different sections of the conflict of interest law, some of which require only disclosure, others require approval of the appointing authority. Sometimes the appointed authority is the select board, sometimes the appointed authority is the town manager. So there are all different flavors.
Right. So, and this is, this is kind of like a continuing education thing for these regulatory boards to know when they need to step up and submit that, you know, recusal form or declaration of potential conflict, or that there is no conflict of interest. Is it possible for our town council to actually produce a kind of a crib sheet that we can pass out to the boards where they're making these decisions, so that even the members would be able to say, well, I'm kind of in doubt? It would be nice to be able to look at a, a summary, if you will, of some of the situations that come up pretty regularly, to help them decide, oh, I guess I better do something.
I believe we have a summary of the conflict of interest law in the committee handbook.
Committee handbook.
Oh, okay.
Fortunately for us, nobody's taken advantage of that disparaging interpretation with respect to appeals or lawsuits. I just want to clean that language up, so at least we know what the rule we're playing with is.
Yep.
It's good for us, too, to get a little more education, because we might then be more in tune to say, this doesn't look right.
We'll not find out secondhand after the horse is already out of the barn, at least we knew what the parameters were going for.
Right, right. Could be a good reminder.
So I think is a discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate that, man.
Sure.
Anything else, discussion for future agenda items?
Madam Chair, could, I apologize to interrupt. Could I just go back?
I just looked up the answer to the question that came up on the positions.
The vacant administrative clerk was in the accounting office and has subsequently been filled, but that was the department that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So if the board would consider, I think we should maybe take up the discussion about the management of the Black Beach, Jepcoy Beach area, and whether or not, I mean, we, I think we talked about it once before, it's very difficult to manage, but I'm still getting people with concerns about the fact that there's so many unleashed dogs. In fact, I was going to take my own dog out there to kind of check it out, and there was so many, and my dog's really not good with other dogs, so I keep her on a leash, but if another dog comes charging up to her, she might bite it, so.
She is going on camera, though.
I took, yeah. So I chose not to take that walk out there, and so I think it really is a concern, because when I saw how many were out there, and so I have a friend who lives out there, this is not just coming from nowhere, and she's to the point where she doesn't even enjoy going on the beach anymore, because there's just so many dogs, they run in the ocean, they run up and jump on people, and there was a Facebook post last week with, you know, sunny day, people walking on the beach, and I liked the post, because it looked like a really nice setting. Most of the dogs had leashes, but then my friend goes, geez, I can't believe you liked that post, after all the times I've been telling you this problem, and there it is, and you're liking it. She goes, does this mean that you condone this? And I'm like, man, you know, but anyway, it is an ongoing management problem that I think we should kind of take ownership of. I don't know how that gets done, but maybe we can just talk about it, at least, if there's anything we can do.
And let's do it before summer comes.
Yeah, well, it's the winter that's more of a problem, because that's when.
Oh, that's true.
That's when you can't take dogs on the beach if they're leashed, and you pick up after them. But.
They do do a good raking before summer comes, too, for the people that don't pick it up either.
Yeah, well, if the board would consider discussing it, I think we should at least talk about it.
I agree. Anything else?
I think it would be good to have a COVID-19 update from our health agent, given that Marcell County is currently in high.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know if we should be doing anything differently.
He has been doing his Friday.
He's been doing every other week.
Yeah, I've seen him on YouTube, but it would, I think having him come in front of the board, and we'll just give him five minutes, because I think that's a great idea.
Agreed.
Or warrant is more arm, right? Anything else?
Hmm, not just, we still have a few that we've been thinking about for a while, like the policy discussion and stuff, but we still have some, maybe some more workshops to go in the winter, I don't know. Still thinking of that.
Another policy workshop, because we brought that up before.
Right.
So maybe February or March, we could do, we could do another workshop, again, if the board is wanting to. I find them very, very helpful on a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
So yes, we can do a policy workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Check.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?